Please rise for the indications by Councilman Carr, followed by the predilections by Councilman Carter.
My name is President Statehead, I should refer on a petition by Thomas Jefferson. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable ministry, sound learning, and pure matters. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride, ignorance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitude brought hindered out of the many kindreds and tongues. And thou with thy spirit of wisdom, those who in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that they may, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In times of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the days of trouble, suffer not our trust to fail. All of this we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on.
Karen.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Evan.
Here.
Lace.
Here.
Garth.
Here.
Trudy. Gersky.
The reading of minutes of the regular council meeting held in January 21st. Motion to approve and dritten. Motion made by Dave, second by Justin, to approve and dritten. Any question? Anybody from the public under the question? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Indications.
I have two. First is from James Conley, American Hose Company number one. The American Hose Company is submitting an application to the borough zoning office to install a fire suppression system in our building kitchen area. We are requesting a waiver of all fees assessed by the borough and their agents associated with this construction project. I am available to answer any questions that you may have with this request. My contact information is enclosed.
Motion made second. Under question. Anybody from the public wishing to comment? Tony?
Tony Rodger, 28 South Roro Road Street. Would that include the zoning hearing? Or is the building permitted zone?
Asking for borough agents, anything associated with the construction project. All in.
Understood. Is a zoning hearing required? Because if it is, the advertisement fees, corporate quarter fees, and the borough attorney fees are not waiving features agreeing to pay costs. And I think there's a difference between the borough waiving administrative fees and agreeing to pay costs associated with the zoning hearing. That's my opinion.
I don't know if there's a zoning hearing that's required for or not. I don't know that. Anybody else? Mike, if you know, the zoning hearing would be for a fire suppression system for a kitchen.
It's already in the building. Where do you have that? Do you already have the kitchens? Kitchens already there. You're just putting, you're not changing the use. Zoning's for use.
Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Next is from the planning commission by Antonio Rodger, our chairperson. Since we have two member vacancies and one whose medical condition makes it difficult for him to attend at our February 10, 2014 meetings, commission members decided to ask Borough Council to at least temporarily reduce the number of members from seven to five so that we can have a forum on a more frequent basis. We are trying to continue our review, to continue to review the ESP SAL note. However, since the last time we had a forum was September 30, 2013, we have been able to do so. We discussed and agreed to hold an advertised workshop session during the next four weeks so we can finish our review of that document. Hopefully, we will complete our task and make recommendations to council within the next four to six weeks.
Make motion to further request assistance, we need to investigate down there.
Fair or second? Motion made second. Turn over the solicitor for research. Under the question? Anybody from the public under the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Managers report.
Okay, I guess the first thing I want to talk to the council about is the snow removal procedures. I gave everyone a copy of the schedule for next week, two, three days. Also a copy of our policy and emergency room plan. We're picking up with snow removal again, Thursday, tomorrow morning, by first thing in the morning, 1:00 a.m. And we're running three crews presently. Two of our own crews and we also have an outside contractor to help us out.
Who is the outside contractor?
It's actually a couple. Tony Price, Callet for Mary Dean. And some others help out altogether. They form a group of two lawyers.
So Tony knows how it's supposed to be?
We've enlisted help from both because of equipment right now. So he also helped out. Radoka, I reached out with him. He's got to take care of the regular customers. But he will be fine available in the same Thursday.
Do you think we're going to get any relief from the state?
I wouldn't rely on it. Years ago, we may have, but they changed the procedures back in 2009. I haven't talked to Scoob Leema about it. To get, you know, to get an update, but back in '09 FEMA changed the procedures and we have to have a record, or near record, snowball to qualify for assistance. And I don't believe we're near that.
Same last record you made.
According to them, the record for, records snowball for school apparently for one day is 25, 28 inches. Two days, 26, 26 inches. Three days, 27, 25 inches. A near record snowball, you live in 10% of that.
Now, are supplies?
Oh, we're fine with supplies.
We're paid for a couple more supplies?
Yeah, we're fine with supplies. We're okay with salt. I know some communities have a difficulty getting salt in the state, but we're okay. We could, we could, we haven't go to a store, you know, sell it for $10 of salt.
So what do we do?
Well, for tomorrow, we're doing part of, well, the way our policy works is we always do the main girl there first. Obviously, it's just that most everything is traveling. And when you get, now that we're not swarming, a lot of things. Plus, it's an emergency room, business district, etc. So we have first. Then from there, we branch out to our other emergency rooms. Tomorrow, we're doing part of Washington, all of our, Fortsburg, and Union. And then, well, you have the schedule. So I guess I need some guidance from council on how long do we want to use the private contractor? We do have him booked for tomorrow and the next day. Do you want us to keep using him? You know, how, how long do you want us, you know, to, to go with the snow?
It takes years.
Are we looking at Saturday, Sunday?
What's, what's the update on our equipment that we've been having issues with? Are they fixed yet?
The two trucks that we have down should be fixed sometime tomorrow.
And how long have they been down?
Don't remember. The one with the transmission had the, we sent it away here in the building. The old one wasn't picked on. It seems like we'll be getting a replacement part for that. Last week, middle of last week.
Can a fire engine get on every street and walk over every house?
I'll ask the chief.
I didn't ask that question.
I don't know if you.
There we were saying.
I think you might have to get far over the back.
I was saying, if we have a fire engine on every street and walk over it, we need to. We need to work that and not let up on the snow.
Are we, are we under manned? Like, do we, do we have enough manpower ourselves as a borough to continue doing this? I mean, I think it's kind of foolish that we have to even subcontract out and waste, not waste money, but spend money on other entities and not utilize our own borough.
We have, I mean, we can only have so many people. I mean, if it snow clouds, I mean, a budget only takes employment level at a certain point.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's been a tough winter. So where do you draw the line? I mean, if we get to hire 15 more people just in case it's going to snow. I mean, it would always be great to have more people in a workforce. It would always be great.
Can we now have part-time workers for situations like this that are trained?
We have been using some part-time workers for governing streets, but a lot of times we have to be very careful on any type of union, you know, issues.
In essence, by subcontracting work, we are using part-time employee, in essence, by doing that. You're not employing them full-time. You don't have, you're utilizing them when you need them. Quite frankly, we could also, by utilizing subcontractors like that, we wouldn't have to change if a snowstorm took place. They can continue to do what they were planning to do while the guys who are employees are kind of plowing snow.
If that's feasible to do.
Depending on how typical the storm is.
Bottom line, we're trying to do, we're trying to do snow removal and we, and plow snow because we've encountered two storms within snow removal processes.
And daily operation.
And daily operations, everything else. So I guess it would be the direction, from what I hear is to keep going until we have everything pretty well cleaned up. Does that include us Sunday as well?
Well, they did it this past Sunday.
No, they have been working like three weeks.
They've been working three weeks straight. That's what I'm saying. The equipment's getting hammered and the personnel are getting hammered.
I was, I was out with the borough workers yesterday that were up on Penn Street and they had no issues with continuing to keep on working to clear the streets. And if they're allowing us to utilize them, we might as well keep on utilizing them.
And they're a dedicated crew.
Yes.
They've been doing great.
I mean, I do, I did.
Difficult surface.
The front end motor needs some work. That's why I was asking before about the equipment. Two of the four tires are bald. The bucket on the front is very, very loose. I guess that is from overusing it, but some of the things do need to be looked at. Account, I think, they've been doing a good job, but I just think there's some accountability that needs to be, you know, followed through with and make sure that we're on then to.
But the equipment, just the equipment is, the way they're using it at this point, that's, that's the reason for breakdown. Because up until the snowstorms, I got a report on the equipment failures from the mechanic and it was minimal.
Yeah. But, I mean.
It is hard on the equipment this year.
Like that though, I mean.
Not in two weeks.
I was saying, two weeks to get an emergency vehicle, around your corner, that we plow seven days a week.
Now, if our equipment does go down, I mean, we have, you know, we have others, you know, there's other equipment that we can utilize from contractors if necessary. So we won't be stuck. We'll be able to use something.
But how is our equipment? Like, I, the past few years that I've been involved here, we bought and used the equipment and we're continuously putting money into maintaining them. I just, you know, how much money is our equipment funds where we could, you know, give better equipment to our borough workers, somehow update, you know, I was looking at the height in snow removal. They have a, they have a big snow blower that attaches to the front of their front end loader and it goes right down the street. It pretty much grinds up that snow, compacts it even more, more can fit into the trucks and then we don't, we could utilize the dumping sites even more. I just think that there's certain things that we can do as a council to better operate the snow removal plant. I see that we have snow emergency routes, but what exactly are the snow emergency routes? Because just like in last year in Coldwell, when a snowbank gets in place, there's on odd days, they're not allowed to park on certain parts of the streets. On even days, they're not supposed to park on certain sides of the streets and it makes their snow removal so much more easier because they're allowed to plow to the curb on one side and on the other side, they only have to do the snow removal on one side then. I mean, I just think we're beating ourselves and making more work when we could be looking at things to lessen up and do more work in, in certain time periods.
We've looked, everything you said we've looked into over the years too.
Well, I mean.
Come down to what you're going to play, come down to what you've come for and what's feasible. And we've looked at different things. We can certainly look at them again.
You have one heard.
Well, I've already asked Rob, because I'm on the, it's the equipment committee. I've already asked Rob to put together a, we need to sit down and call it some type of replacement schedule for vehicles.
I mean, our equipment is older, you know.
And it's time to restore. Stop running young. Just keep on costing us, like I said, maintenance fees. We can continue, not against the police car, but we could replace the police cars, but we're not replacing our borough equipment and they're not working hard.
Well, that was exactly the discussion we had, is we need to look at getting some newer equipment now because it's getting older, you know, and it's showing signs of wear.
But the snow, the snow bands.
It's, you know, it breaks sometimes.
If I, if I could, I'll even come to, to whoever, what committee would I refer this to? The parking in traffic? For the snow, snow removal.
Review the policy?
Yes, review the policy.
Snow parking policy.
Yes.
Never always fell on our parking traffic.
So if I could, you know, we could talk about this and refer to that committee and.
So what do you, so what would you want to do?
Make a motion, make a motion to review the snow, the snow policy.
So you want to make a motion to, for the snow policy review to the parking traffic?
Yes, to review it and possibly revise it if need be.
And that's a motion?
Yes.
Fair or second?
Well, sir.
Motion made second to turn the snow parking ban issued over to parking in traffic. Anything under the question?
Just to clarify, is it parking we're talking about, not the plowing and snow removal policy? Those are separate things.
Correct.
Right.
I looked for more than that.
And a review of whole policy.
Yeah.
It was last review in '09, I think.
And then nothing went from there, just failed.
I remember that. As a committee for parking in traffic, there's three councilmen and I think you're only allowed to have three at the meeting. You're not allowed to have four.
Well, you could have four, but that needs to be a public meeting and it has to be advertised.
Unless one of us sits out and lets you sit in on it. Which is okay.
Okay.
Any questions, council? Anybody from the public comment on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, so, well, we'll, I'll keep giving you daily updates like I do on the snow removal and with new streets as. And I'll talk with the contractor and I know he's, he's willing and others are willing to, to come in and agree with him. So I'll speak with him and then we'll give updates as we proceed.
The storm drains, Kevin, is it supposed to rain in the next couple of days?
Yeah.
Storm drains are mostly buried.
Well, that's on the schedule, the storm drains. That's on their floor, Thursday, Friday.
On Friday.
And we've, like Brian mentioned, we utilize some, today, they were going around opening up hydrants that are buried. And also ask, we also ask residents, if you have a hydrant in your neighborhood, if you're pleased, you know, open up.
Speaking about part-time, can borough council members get trained on plow trucks?
No.
We're borough employees.
The reason why I ask that is because in New Ringland, their borough council members plow. They don't get paid, but they are put under the insurance policy so that if there is a snow emergency and stuff and they do need to be used, they, they're, they're volunteer, I want them to pay.
We deal with a collective bargaining unit with our employees and that's going to be, there's all kinds of issues with that that we want to talk about. Personnel issues in an executive session, we can certainly do that, but I'm not willing to talk about anything about the bargaining here in public.
We also require all of our people that have commercial driver's license to see, you know. It's not required for every vehicle we have, but it is for a lot of.
I'm just trying to offer my assistance and I know those guys, you know, like I said, they've been working hard and anything that I can do to, you know, help them out, I'm willing to do, so.
I guess, my question about that. I did, I had our garbage contract on the agenda also because we're coming to, we're coming close to the end of a three-year contract with our garbage collector. It expires the end of May. So I just wanted to let everyone know that I'd be putting together the documents to get that out, you know, get that advertised and out to some prospective bidders. I was planning to, you know, do that in a similar fashion as we have in the past. Ask for a one, two, and three-year agreement for garbage recycling, ashes, all the items in the world.
Do you have a motion regarding advertising for the RFP?
If you like, that would be great.
Motion to authorize a borough manager to issue an RFP to solicit bids for the refuse and recycling contract.
Fair or second? Motion made second to advertise for an RFP for the refuse and recycling contract. Anything under the question?
Actually, if I could just clarify, we'd be, we'd be advertising for bids. Okay, so the RFP.
So, amend it. Second on the, or amendments on the second. Anyone from the floor wish to comment on this motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
Brian, I just wanted to ask you, what was, what was the resolution of the, how long are we going to plow?
As long as it takes.
Okay.
Any else, Kevin?
Not at this time, no, thank you.
Chief of Police.
It said one thing, our part-timers are allowed to authorize to work up to 29 hours a week. Affordable Care Act being extended, like authorization, you're allowed to work on 32 hours, which is four days instead of three days and five hours.
Doesn't change anything else, Mike, as far as?
Actually, the antics, the antics, it's still part-time. Once you're over 30, once you hit the 35, then that creates an issue.
Okay. Someone like to make that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Motion made, are you second?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the part-timers to work up to 32 hours under the Affordable Care Act. Under the question, anyone from the public wish to comment on this motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Any else, Chief?
Yeah, also, Bob Jones, the Public Works Director, Kevin and I spoke to a representative of All Traffic Solutions that President Gersky discussed before. Just have a paper in your packet there, radar speed sign. This thing is pretty impressive to say the least. But with the difficulties we're having with speed on different streets, just talked about getting one of these. It's a little over, it's 4200, Kevin?
Oh, there's a quote there. Could I give you a copy of that, Chief?
I had one from the. I had a quote.
I think in the end, there's a quote inside. And also the test drive. Test drive for.
And you can, if I get it wrong here, the guy who showed it to us takes pictures of vehicles that are speeding. That's great in states with front license plates. We can't arrest them after the fact anyway, but we can identify them, the local residents, whatever. We can put this sign on a problem area, set up for seven days. It'll give us a printout of every car, what their speed was and everything else. Warns drivers when they're speeding by a flashing light and displays their speed. Has a GPS tracking unit on it that, with our phones in our cars. Say there's someone coming down Lafayette Street, which we're going to have problems and complaints. Say they're doing 55 miles an hour. Actually send us an immediate text and picture of the car going speeding. So if you're coming up West Broad Street, you can look at the car and when he comes out on Surtar Street, stop. If the unit's stolen, the GPS, you can track right to where it's at. It's in someone's home and it'll tell you that's where it's at. All, and it's so portable, we just get different brackets for it and put them wherever we want them. Put it up, okay, and you were there too. I was impressed because at first, when I heard the call, I said, nah, I think it's a dispense. And when I seen everything it could do, I was impressed. I said, well, you changed my mind. How did you feel?
I, I certainly thought that it did less than it does. So I was, I was impressed by the demonstration. You know, we have struggled with some of the complaints on Lafayette Street and how we address them effectively. I mean, this is just a tool. I certainly think that it can give us some insight into where the problem areas are versus where they're not, maybe.
Well, someone makes a complaint and we set up for seven days. You can get the average speed of vehicles and the exact speed of every vehicle. I was impressed too. It did a lot more than I thought it did. I thought it displayed the speed and said, oh, you're going too fast, but it did a lot more than that.
Hazleton has this. Hazleton has this.
And they're also willing, the company wants to give it to us for a trial run for four weeks. And I said, well, let's wait till the snow. It's pretty interesting. If someone steals a unit, they're in private, take it down, take the picture. And then you get it on your phone.
Is that where the wireless goes to your computer here or?
It's by satellite and then GPS satellite. If you're a phone system.
Oh, goes to your, your cellphone, pictures?
If you set it up for that.
You can set it up to the computer, just the same.
An IP address on your machine. And is this how?
One, I'd say you send that whatever parameter, like say anybody going over 10 miles per hour speed and they would send a picture, something like that. Another neat thing about it is, you have a two different speed zones. Say a 35 mile per hour zone and 25 mile per hour zone. One week you have it to 35, next week you have it to 45. You can program it, when it goes to another area, it knows where it's at and it automatically adjusts for that speed. And if you put in there that this week it's going to be on Lafayette, next week it'll be in Outreak in seven days. It'll send you a text and say, hey, I'm supposed to be in Outreak today. And I asked the guy, I said, does it cook breakfast? It's really, really, pretty neat thing.
So we can fill out the forms and then we can either vote for it, we can either motion to do that.
I was just pretty ready for, I think, we do the test run and then discuss.
Test run, what opener?
We'll talk about square, for the test run.
I'm thinking April 1, roads are clear, license, snow.
Oh, it's totally better.
We don't need a motion to do that.
I'm not going to do anything yet.
I think you could put it on every street until.
Well, I think the mayor's finished. We've had a couple difficulties with cars, but nothing major, but the unmarked car, 180, needs a manifold intake, I believe it is.
Yeah.
179 needs an air blower, the heat stopped working in it. I think because of the cold weather, things are breaking more than usual. 179 Explorer needed tires last week. The AD called me and said, tires are really low, going to get tires. Yeah, can't stand my tires. So there's probably going to be some expenses for vehicle maintenance this week, but just the same with the borough, they've been breaking down, ours is too.
Ricky, is this, is this being signed, given out of your budget or the borough's budget?
I thought you were going to go.
We can, we can say, discuss what fund, whether the equipment wants to lose fund, whatever, we can look at.
So it's not.
We could look at.
I couldn't think.
Wrap that up.
Any else, Chief?
No.
Many reports, public safety?
It's public safety. It's public safety, you'd like to make a motion to approve a mutual aid agreement for fire protection in the borough of Mesquite.
Motion made second for approving the mutual aid agreement for Mesquite, anything on the question?
Is this okay with Tom Hart?
Yep. Just to add to that, there's gonna be two more coming, we're gonna have to initiate them, Haven and Martin City.
Cam will approve.
I thought, forget it, I'll.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so we have.
To make a motion to hire Christopher Cruz as a part-time police officer effective immediately.
Second.
Motion made and second to hire Christopher Cruz, part-time police officer, effective immediately. Other questions? Anyone from the public wish to comment on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so we have.
He's here.
You're welcome, sir.
Christopher Cruz.
Thank you.
I'm gonna introduce individually after the meeting.
Where's Christopher from?
Placerville.
Hi, Colonel Placerville. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Uh, just my way of information, I intended to have a recreation meeting last Thursday. Of course, I scheduled it for the day as part of the snowstorm, so we postponed that until this Thursday. So I would expect that our next meeting will have some motions for that to be.
Anyone from the floor wishing to address counsel? Why don't we jump along, here we go.
Yes, I'd like to.
Name and address.
From Haggerty, Broad Street, here in Tamara. I'd like to present a petition to the board of 160 names of people who would like to see the parking meters either removed or returned back to the Tencent item in front of the high-rise. We have living in that half a block from the bridge to Pine Street. We have more people living in that half a block than any five blocks within the borough. And to tax those people 500% increase for parking is ridiculous. The town fathers, when they built that building, were so wise as to put 144 park units in there and put in 30 parking spaces and then take 10% of them away for staff, leaving 27 parking spaces for 144 units. They've cut down the unit staff now, but we're still way, way over what any block has. David, you're in charge of parking, would you like to say you put parking meters on Arlington Street? You can get your neighbors to put in 50 cents for an hour. That's only $1,000 a year to park in front of your house. So I think somehow, guys, we've gotta start thinking. The people who are living in that first half of the block, in the 200 block, 90% of them are either on social security, disability, or some other form of public assistance, and you're taxing them 500%. If you look at it, I see people coming over with walkers to put dimes in the meters, now they're gonna go over and put quarters in the meter. It's ridiculous. If anything, I think we should take and make 10 handicapped spots there for the people who are living there. The, the government was the one that screwed it up by not putting enough parking spaces, why are we penalizing them? This is, this is a, a thought, as I said, I got 160-some names there of people who would like to see them either removed or at least returned back to the Tencent piece. It's ridiculous, they, they, the public who can least afford it. I mean, when you think in terms of the, the public in Tamara, that half a block is far, far more heavily populated than anyplace else. And like I said, they're all in some system of getting help. Please, guys, do something to help those people out, thank you.
Anyone else from the floor wishing to address counsel?
I'm not done, that's my boss.
Your address, please, name and address.
Janet Haggerty, 222 Broad Street. I don't know if anybody came to the meeting tonight from the high-rise. And you will find on those papers, the elderly people who could not come here tonight because of the bridge, okay? Two things, the parking bit, when you have snow removal, the people that park across the street, the high-rise, have no place to take their cars. That was the problem we had. The second one, and I hate to say this, but they asked me to ask you, do you really care about the elderly or do you care about the money? You have people on this ward who have elderly people, okay? Keep that in mind, do something for the people at the high-rise. They buy groceries here, they buy everything else. And if they would've been here tonight, they would've come. But because of the weather and the high-rise, you know, everything, they didn't come. So I said to them today, I will say that, do you care about the elderly or do you care about the parking meters? Like, my husband said, put a tag over the top, you're gonna have to remove. There were a couple that are handicapped. We have one woman that's on oxygen and has to walk to the Sunoco to park her car because they don't have a spot for her. So, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't wanna put a burden on you, but you people that have elderly families, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Excuse me, I had something, as I said, I, I was just picking David out because I happen to know that. But even, even any one of you guys, if we could put parking meters in front of your house, would you be happy? Could you convince your neighbors to put $1,000 a year out for parking in front of their homes? I rest my case on that.
I think, I think you have a point, you know, and I didn't realize that there's people who live in that high-rise that are parking, I mean.
That's the only place they have.
I mean, how many meters could we take out of it?
There's only 13 meters there, and I, I think you should, but each 10 of them is handicapped.
So if we, what, I mean, we make 10 of them handicapped specifically for the high-rise and the Majestic House?
I would think so, the Majestic has a good amount of parking spaces, not, not enough to handle it, but at least they do have a halfway decent amount of parking spaces behind the Majestic. When the high-rise was built, the, the government officials obviously had no idea or no concept of what was happening. They put 144 units and 30 parking spaces. That's, that's asinine, I mean, I, I can't believe it, but it was, any intelligence would do that.
And the, the high-rise doesn't, they don't look into getting parking anywhere for any residents?
There is, there is no other place, and, and, and the sad part of it is, you have to live in the high-rise approximately two and a half to three years before you get a parking space in that lot. You, you, you have to wait there and hope somebody dives or moves. It's a shame, but that's about the only way you're gonna get a parking space.
And were, were you serious when you said that there's 10 parking spaces for staff?
No, I said there's 10% for staff.
Oh, 10%.
There's 30 parking spaces and, and three of them are reserved for the staff of the building.
Three for staff?
Yes. Yeah, well, that's using the back, but it's a legal part. But it's just, it's, guys, it's, it's, it's really, it's really rough. When I see people going out with canes and with walkers to put money in the meter, that's a crime. I mean, really, these are our elderly people, I, I gotta go along with, I'm one of them. Really, I'm, I'm healthy enough, I can walk and, and park down at the Sunoco station. But that's a two-block walk for me to get in my car every time I want, because there's no place for us to park nearby. Now, if anything, the garage is behind the high-rise, should've been knocked down years ago and made into a parking facility. Is there nothing but a dump?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we don't have that authority.
We don't have.
I understand. If I thought you did, I would think like that.
Um, if I can ask though, do you happen to know how many businesses are in that block?
Yeah, there are three businesses in the block, there's a dentist and two beauticians, and both, all three of them have parking spaces behind their building, so it's not interfering with them at all.
Have, have you spoken to them at all?
I have spoken to them, I, 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 I spoke to the people at the Majestic and all of them. I'm, I'm primarily interested in that half a block from the bridge to Pine Street.
Well, and to clarify, and I'll, I'll admit, I'm not an expert on where the numbers change from one block to another, but I think the, the rest of the 200 block also exists on the east side of the river.
Yeah, on the east side, now, there are a little more businesses, but in reality, it's, it's kind of, it's, I wonder now, why would that be taxed with, with meters? And the 300 block, you have, you have a bar, you have town hall here, you got the Wawa, you got a bank, you got a post office, you got HR block, you got a beer distributor, and no parking meters. There are full businesses and no parking meters, and down there it's a residential area and you stick a couple of meters.
It's a, it's a.
Huh? Exactly, my experience is, pick them up and move them up the road. Hey, you hear my message?
Aye. I make a motion to remove the parking meters.
Both have been made, it are second.
I'm watching you guys, if you don't second.
Motion fails for lack of second.
Make a motion to refer the question to the Parking and Traffic Committee to investigate it.
Is there a second motion?
I'll second that.
Motion made second to refer the issue of parking traffic for investigation.
How long that can I take to, uh?
Hold on.
Get them?
One second, under the question, counsel.
Can Mr. Haggerty be at the meetings that we have?
Most definitely, I'd love to.
Anything else on public, now? No, Mrs. Haggerty gets the first shot at it. Now, you can ask your question.
I forgot what it was. How long is it gonna take to get your request to?
It, it's hard to say, I mean, Dan, Dan is in charge of the committee, so it's a matter of getting everybody together, getting able to get out there, so give it some time, but it's not gonna drag on forever and ever and ever. We'll, we'll work pretty, pretty diligently at it.
I usually have one meeting a quarter.
In the meantime, what are these elderly residents gonna do with the parking? You see what I mean?
Maybe the parking meter can walk away somewhere.
You know what?
We've got, we've gotta look into it, in the meantime, I mean, it is what it is, at this point, we're just getting the, the chance to look into it now. So we have referred to committee, let's see what, let's see what comes up. That's what we can, that's what we can offer at this point.
Are there a phone number that I could have, please? Thank you.
Anyone else from the floor wishing to address counsel, Tony, sorry.
I have something else to say.
No, it's not a question, we gotta vote, you started questioning.
Comment from the floor, when I first moved here, I lived at West Broad Street. And there are parking meters all the way down, West Broad Street. I was told that everything east of Pine and west of Nescapek is subject to a monthly parking permit. At the time, I was paying $10 per month for a little sticker that I came in and got from Rita every month. And I put it in my windshield and that allowed me to park anywhere on Broad Street, anywhere in town with a parking meter except Broad Street and South Railroad Street, Broad Street limited to west of Pine and east of Nescapek, without paying the meters. Now, if everybody here that in question lives east of Pine, if that parking permission is still in effect.
Nope.
I don't know that that is.
It's from Pine Street and, and not Chumpkin, it's not on Broad Street at all. And it's $16 for a parking permit, and if you have one, you'd be the luckiest person in the world to find a place to park.
But the moral of the story is, I think that needs to be incorporated to the, the conversation that the committee's going to have.
Yes, that would be my suggestion, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, under the motion, under the motion?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I do. My daughter lives on Broad Street, and there is a thing where there's a little tag to put in your windows. I mean, I know that, but she lives out at the end of Broad, and they do have them. So I don't know if they can check on that either.
Well, that's what we're.
That's what we're just talking about, you cannot park on Broad Street or Sunset Street.
The tags are for certain areas, and that, that area not being one of them. So it's something that they're going to look into.
Oh, okay.
Anything else under the question of the motion? Are you gonna, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So we have. Anyone else from the floor? Right.
Ray Vineski, 652 East Broad Street. Mike, where are we at with this E wall up there?
They got a new attorney, they fired their attorney.
That's great.
No, no, but I got, I got a guy that's finishing up the documents, he said, get them to me right away. The other guy was dragging his feet, they got a new attorney and I work pretty well with him, so.
Well, that's good. Get this thing settled, get our money.
Yep.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Everan, 30 Clay Street. On a question of the snow removal, we had a lot of misunderstanding of on Clay Street. It was posted in the paper that they wouldn't start removing the snow till later in the afternoon. Monday morning, 1 o'clock, some of my neighbors and myself were awakened by the police department saying that we have to move the cars, which some of us complied to do, we still got ticketed a $25 fine. Thing being is, a woman that lives on this street is handicapped, called up the borough, they informed her that they would be on Clay Street around 11 o'clock. Leaving early for work in the morning, I figure I won't be in the way again, they're only gonna be on Clay Street at 11. Well, it created a lot of controversy with neighbors, some of them, they even had a, their car on the rollback. The man told them $50 cash to get the car off the rollback. Well, we know where that money went, he wasn't accepting a check. Plus, they had two cars, they both leave for work in the morning, they also got ticketed. I'm not condemning the police department, they're doing their job, the borough was trying to do theirs as far as removing snow, to have emergency vehicles, have easier access, I commend them for that. I was just wondering, and I asked the officers, Badger, number 47, I didn't get his name, I said, I'm complying to moving the car, do I still have to pay the ticket? Yes. Well, he knocked on the door, I was hoping that perhaps, just for better community relations, at least if somebody answered, they can refrain from ticketing them as long as they are complying to moving their vehicle. If they don't, then so be it, ticket them. It's starting to create a little tension between the police department, lack of respect for the borough too. Created hardship, a lot of people worked hard on cleaning their pavement. I understand removing the snow piles are frozen. When the personnel removed the snow, some of them fell on the people's pavement. For me, all right, it's a chore, I'll do it. I'm concerned about the elderly, the handicapped, people who can't get out and clean their pavements off. I understand you have to have a three-foot wide path on your pavement, but that, the borough's taxed with removing the snow, plowing the snow with all the sorts, sort of people on, as far as shoveling it. They clear off their pavements, wake up in the morning and there's the ice boulders on their pavement. What I would suggest is, as I've seen in other boroughs, when they do post the signs, they have the time when they will start and when they will quit. Just a suggestion, there was a lot of miscommunication. I know now that they start at, at, after midnight. I know it now from what happened up on Clay Street. But a lot of people on Clay Street, I'll just speak for myself for mis, misinformed. Lot figured they leave early in the morning, they'll be out of the way, the crews come as they did in the past. And there wasn't any heartburn with that, people moved, and there they were to remove the snow. I would just suggest that on the posters that you put on the poles, have starting time. And, and maybe an approximate any time, any time is, you know, you have the gray area there, I understand that. But at least it would eliminate a lot of confusion, because people were saying to me, as we were out there, it was in the paper, it wouldn't be till about 10 o'clock. The lady that was handicapped said, I called the borough office, I was informed they wouldn't be a large part of the street till 11. There's the confusion, perhaps on the sign. I know it's in the paper and I know it was posted online, and that's where people said it was posted at the wrong time. If it's on the sign that's posted right, when people look at it on the street the day ahead of time, or even the night before, I know the police are taxed enough with what they have to do in the town, but they were there 1 o'clock in the morning to tell people, move your vehicle. Maybe the night before, say, hey, we're gonna enforce it, but if it's on the sign or on the poster, it can eliminate the confusion and maybe the hard feelings between the police department, which they didn't create themselves anyway, they're only doing their job. But it does create that tension up there and a little bit of lack of respect. So I'm just saying here, maybe a suggestion on the posters, have starting time. That way, if there is black and white, then people can't complain that much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I actually agree with him, because even on Hunter Street with this upcoming summer, a lot of people coming, knocking on my door, asking exactly what time, because they're also confused as well. I think we, we, we should take that action and do that, and put times, 11 a.m., it's either 11 a.m. or 1 a.m., correct? When they start snowing.
Yeah, this time, yeah.
I've seen it in neighboring boroughs, they have it on theirs, now.
I don't know what caused the time confusion though, because we never change the time. It was always, it was always right after midnight at 1 a.m. It was always, it was always right after midnight at one AM. I, I don't know what caused the, the time confusion.
Well, people said it was posted online, and the lady that was handicapped that has a handicap spot in front of her house, she's really concerned because she said, I don't want to get a ticket or have my car towed away. And she called up, as I'm shoveling off my pavement, she's telling me they won't be on our side of the hill till about eleven o'clock.
Maybe these people were laying a message, maybe they...
Well, perhaps.
But we advertise, we advertise the times.
I send it to the media.
And we make sure that the borough staffs are worth the time.
And you usually post it for us.
Well, I mean, I've lived up there for twenty-two years, this is the first time we ever had any contact. There were other times when we had bad storms, and the borough did a good job, even, and I'll commend them on it. The borough workers would be there pushing the snow that was pushed on their pavements by the, by the plow. This time, you come out and there's big snow boulders on the pavements. Like I said, myself, all right, I can do it. With the elderly handicapped, you're creating a problem for them.
Can I make a comment on that? I understand what you're saying, I agree with you in somewhat. Thing is, if you put the times on the signs, say, three o'clock in the morning, we can't wait till three o'clock to have the cars moved and towed.
No, I understand that, but at least, at least the people know to get up, get their car off of there. Here it was to the point, as, as they complained to me that they didn't know the time.
See, we can't, we have to get everything moved before the crews get up there and get...
Yeah, I understand that, that's right.
So whatever reason, this one, there was just a miscommunication or a misrepresentation of the time?
And at the same time, no, they knocked on the door and asked to move the car. All right, it's one o'clock in the morning, that's, that's not a problem for you. I complied with it, but you still got the ticket. Now, I'm just saying, if they can knock on the door and ask you to move, just delaying writing the ticket out for those people that will comply with you. If they don't answer the door or not there, what are the choices the officer have but to ticket the car? That, that's what I'm asking too, on that, on that.
The reason the officers do that is to save you the cost of the tow. And when they have to do it, they have to run your plate. Home Center has to run it, have to get back to them. Clay Street had twenty cars on it. To go to every door and do that, it's unrealistic.
They were doing it.
If there were twenty cars on Clay Street though, there must have been some miscommunication.
They, they, yeah, I, I feel like, I know they were, they never ticketed just offhand.
The signs say...
The signs said, no parking Monday.
Right.
Some of them did.
I mean, they're chief's...
Some did, some just had snow removal. Then, then the worker came that day and was timed it on Monday.
They all, they alternate, some say no snow removal, some say no parking.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting, put the day on and the time.
It didn't have two different days on it, it had snow removal Monday.
Yeah, can you go on Clay Street, Stan? You're, you're on Clay Street, sure?
Yeah. Stan, you go on fifteen Clay Street. With all due respect to all the efforts, snow removal, Ed, very commendable in what you said. I lived on fifteen Clay Street for thirty years. And exactly what Ed said, this is the first time that this has ever been this out of control of power. I paid my ticket today twenty-five dollars. Like I tell you, luckily, my neighbor called me. I moved my car at one-thirty. There was no snow remover in front of my house. I left to go to work, five o'clock in the morning. No snow remover in front of my house. Same impression as Ed did. We're always left early enough in the morning to beat whatever was happening. If the rules change, I think it has to be communicated. I'm not worried about myself now, but for any, any other snow removal in the town, it, it should be communicated that it's on Friday through Sunday night, came home seeing the signs, took one car down, actually had two cars down, Trinity parking lot. I had to run an errand at ten-thirty, I figured, I'll get, I'll get out of town time. All right? The other thing, Mr. Stagwell, my wife called three times to you, never had a return phone call. I go to work at five in the morning, get home six or seven at night. Right now, because of the snow removal, again, great job, but I got a hundred and sixty square feet of snow on my sidewalk. I'm not going to be out there tonight with a nice chopper chopping it off. Do I give the fifty-dollar fine to you? Just give me a couple of days to get rid of it, I'll be happy to. I support this town, we appreciate what everybody's doing. Again, I, I'm glad Ed said what he said, but I wasn't realizing all this difference in times and that. But I'm saying that, please communicate with the people for the rest of the snow removal, twelve oh-one, that's when it starts, so that they, they recognize that steps will be taken if you don't move your vehicle.
Have we used, Kevin, have we used the dial-out, the call-out feature for snow removal in sections?
No.
Can we?
Not entirely. Yeah.
That's fine with people to have, but now that you have to get their cell phones, a lot of people don't have the, the landlines anymore, so that...
And I mean, we get it out as much as we can.
Right. Well, like I said, if you can suggest it and post it on the poster that you're putting up, time will be midnight this day, and you have it on the pole. Nobody should have any confusion over that.
We'll, we'll look in to see where the confusion is.
I mean, I, I see it in Lansford, they have it on theirs when they, they're having snow removal. They have the time they're going to start, and people are off the street.
Right.
That way, you're not putting another burden on them. Police have to go up and move your car, move your car.
And their people have no complaint because it works very well.
It works good, it works over there, I talked to people over there, no problem.
Anyone else on the floor?
Kathy Newdamaker, I live at three twenty-two Monroy Street. I got two things. One is, I don't know who to contact about a house on the corner down the street from me. There's nobody living in it now. I don't know if the bank owns it or the people still own it, but the windows are all smashed out and big plates of wax are laying in the snow along the house.
What's your address again?
Mine is three twenty-two.
The address of the... The answer, the answer would be filed with, with code enforcement in the office here. Come down and see one of the folks that are in the code enforcement and give, you know, actually one of the secretaries actually take the, take the complaint, give it to Josh.
All right. And there's also, I noticed today, there's one on Spruce Street, in the middle of the block, right up from Parisini's.
And, and some of these, I don't, and I was just looking through, but some of these, some of these may have already started the process, they may have been fined already, I don't have it on this, this report, but it's a possibility, but we can look into those addresses, if they just need to be turned over zoning and code enforcement.
All right. Another thing is, I have been numerous places, St. Clair, Lehighton, Tamaco, everywhere, trying to find salt. I have a lot of ice of my pavement, and I cannot get rid of it. Is there a place that the borough can give us some salt or, or what? Can you, somewhere to get it?
We need to run out for our sidewalks because we run out of council board. We're waiting on its backward. I think you'll find that problem all, all...
Because I went to Lowe's and they said they're not even getting bags of it no more. They're giving it all to Satan the Donuts.
We, we run...
We're in the same, same boat.
Council board.
Should try water softener.
Water softener, we had an order.
Anyone else on the floor?
Excuse me, Kathy, could I have, Kathy?
Yeah.
The house you're talking about is on Hunter Street, not on Monroy Street, is that correct?
No, it's on, no. The, the house that I'm talking about down the street from me, it's on Monroy Street, on the corner of Monroy and Cole.
I got pictures sent to me tonight of that property.
And the other house that I was talking about was on Spruce Street.
Michelle, Michelle Mahalak from three thirteen Orange Broad Street. Kevin, I guess it's directed to you, maybe you can give me an answer. Do people that don't shovel their sidewalks get fines?
Oh, yes.
They do? Well, then I think the borough, as another gentleman said, gentleman here, I think the borough needs to find themselves.
Why's that?
Why?
Three eleven?
I'm three eleven, I clean mine, I have no problem. I clean mine, I clean the empty lot that belongs to the borough, and I don't mind at all doing that. I helped Mr. Jones across the street, but when I get a phone call that Smoffa Borough guys are plowing the park boulders, how am I going to move them?
I don't follow your work, worry.
I'm at the Southport Playground now.
I was actually there.
Southport Playground.
Yes. We have boulders, there is no way I am going to move them. And everybody knows it's mostly me and my daughters and Kathy that run that park. Yesterday, we had people on Penn Street taking their shovels and shoveling out on the street. I thought that was against, you couldn't do that.
Right.
Well, they are.
So you're saying that's a result of the snow removal on Penn Street the other day?
Yes.
That the snow was on the sidewalk, on the park.
Yes. I mean, we, everybody has their little banks, it's through the whole town.
Right, right.
But I do not know...
It's this high, it happens, and I mean, you don't want to do it, but it happens. We can't, we can't go through and clear everyone's sidewalk.
I understand that, but then... Only certain people, certain people in the neighborhood were notified that you could shovel it out in the street, and one of them is a borough worker. So all the neighbors got together and shoveled it out in the street. And when one of the council members... You're mis...
I don't think so, because I called you about this last night. I said I think it's miscommunication that we're allowing people to throw their snow in the streets before they pass it doing snow removal. And after they pass it, they're not allowed to throw the snow in the street anymore. We're not allowed to throw the snow in the street when they're out plowing and snowing. Why are we allowed to throw the snow in the street from our sidewalks when they're doing a snow removal? It makes double the work. We're trying to clear the streets, we're not trying to clear, we clear, we have the responsibility for our sidewalks. The borough doesn't.
Right, right.
So why are we allowing, allow people to stack even more snow into an already, an outrageous problem that we have in this town?
Well, that's up to council, if you want to keep allowing them to do that or not. I mean, over, over the years, you know, people, people will, you know, when they know snow removal is coming, they'll put snow on the street, off their sidewalk. And I told Justin, well, we don't make a big deal about it, but if they knew it after, we're gone, that, that's a problem. So, you know, I'll leave that up to, you know, council, could you give me some direction on, are we going to let them do that or...
Well, now, I have, I have nowhere to go with these big boulders, they're, they're stuck there. So that means the kids that get on the bus there, some of the kids that walk up Penn Street to get on the bus, and the daycares, and everybody knows up in that section, we have like three to four daycares. Now...